Good. I believe, right? Or sports, good, right?
Of course, we're good, yeah. Hello.
Okay.
Welcome, everyone. I'm sorry I didn't get the memo that we should have been on vacation. We messed up.
But that's all right. We'll be on vacation after tonight for the month of August. So our, no, our, some of our folks are out of town, so. But we do have a quorum, so we can, we can dispense with our business and take a break in August. So. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, Kate.
Councilwoman Anderson, Councilwoman Pauline.
Here.
Mayor of the city.
Here.
Senator Peonesta.
Here.
Senator Green.
Here.
There you have it.
Thank you, Kate. So, we have some proclamations tonight. First of all, we have our, happy to have you folks here, our Veterans Commission. Glad to see you all. And we have a proclamation to recognize you folks. You guys have done just, you know, unbelievable work in town. Just, what can we say? Just, just go to Veterans Park. And all the other events, too. I mean, you, you do all kind of great things, and we're so grateful. And, you know, I mean, the state, the state knows Berlin because of the park that you guys worked hard in the town, you know, and, but so we, we just wanted to recognize you for what you do. So let me read this, and then I have a plaque to present to you, so. Town Council, Town of Berlin Proclamation recognizes the Veterans Commission. So the Veterans Commission, as it is known today, was created on August 18th, 1998. The Town Council approved the name as it was previously known as the Veterans Advisory Commission. Their mission is to provide services to honor, commemorate, and help all veterans and their families, as well as educate the public regarding historical events through various programs and activities. They are also responsible for preserving all veterans monuments and statues throughout the community. The most notable event that the Veterans Commission is responsible for is the annual Memorial Day Parade. Under the direction of Charles Calorisi, the Town of Berlin comes together to showcase 60 different groups and organizations for the enjoyment of, of all of us here in town. One of the most recent and outstanding achievements was the Town of Berlin being selected for the Woody Williams Gold Star Memorial. The Gold Star Memorial is located in Veterans Park and is dedicated to families whose loved ones paid the ultimate sacrifice. Veterans Memorial Park is relatively new to Berlin, dedicated in 2012. The Veterans Commission played a crucial role in its creation, especially in Phase One and Two. Within the park, there are over 500 bricks with names, branches, and dates of service of those who served. There is also a walking tour, which is interactive, explaining all wars and conflicts that have taken place from the United States, with the United States. The Wall of Honor, which can be found in the Rotunda in Town Hall, was created by Peter Galgano. It is a video of well over 150 service members, featuring a picture and a short summary about each veteran as a way to honor service members that are still with us and those who have passed. The Commission has overseen the relocation of the Marine Monument from Main and Peck Street to Paper Goods Pond and, and the Demore, into Bitter, Bittner Junior Monument from East Berlin to Veterans Memorial Park to honor the service members who've lost their lives in combat. Each year for Memorial Day, over 1,150 flags are placed at 11 cemeteries. Other annual events include a, a band concert and a Veterans Day ceremony. The Veterans Commission, with over $22,000 donated by the Berlin Lions and Berlin Volunteer Fire Department, is able to help veterans and widows in need. Most recently, the bridge on Christian Lane was named the Gold Star Families Memorial Bridge, so. And the list can go on and on. We didn't have enough paper to keep going with what you guys do. We had to cut it somewhere. In recognition of your longstanding service and dedication to the Town of Berlin, veterans and families, the Town Council hereby recognizes the Veterans Commission, and thank you all for your continued support, who valiantly and selflessly serve the United States of America. So, thank you, guys, very much. And with that. So, the.
Well, you know, Mr. Bear, we couldn't do it without your support.
Well, we appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Yes, you do.
And, you know, Peter and I have been doing it for 25 years.
Yeah.
So we got some young blood coming.
Thank you, what are you talking about?
I got my cane. I got, I have a wheelchair in my hand, man. And Jim Fury. So we got some young blood.
That's great.
Some new ideas.
Excellent.
We want to keep on going. Phone call you about today from both. I got a phone call today from the Auxiliary America Legion, Women's Auxiliary. They want to come up here in October to see the park. Heard about it. And the Gold Star Families Memorial. Want us to come up in October. So we'll go up there. We'll be ushers and show them all around. And they want to know where all the good restaurants are.
Oh, money in those, yes.
We do have a band concert on August 6th at 6:30. We moved it, so it's on a Wednesday, so you guys can all come.
That's excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. We missed it because we did last year.
We didn't have it last year.
Year before, you said.
Yeah, because they, they already had their concerts out of state last year.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I'm glad they're back. Those were fun at that. So that's great. That's about the best. So with that, I, I read this, but obviously here is the official framed, you know, we talked up a little bit more of our tax money.
We have permission to hang that down in the rotunda?
You can hang it wherever you like. It's hers. It is yours.
Thank you.
So, congratulations. And I have copies for all of your members as well.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you, guys, again, for your service. Again, wait, there's more. There's more. We have the honorable Donna.
So I just, I'll have, I'll read the two. It's actually, it's the same verbiage, just different names, but I do have something special for you girls and you, Peter. And it's glad to see some younger blood coming up through the line. But it's wonderful to see, you know, you guys out here doing what you do. Appreciate that. From the General Assembly, I have an official citation introduced by myself, Don Avich, Rep. Jack Dizino, and Senator Rick Mopes of the Sixth District. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincere, sincere congratulations to Charles and Peter. I have one for each of you. Your outstanding dedication to Berlin volunteers, veterans, community through your tireless work on the Veterans Commission. From leading the Memorial Day Parade, I have to put my glasses on, I apologize. From leading the Memorial Day Parade, featuring over 60 veteran groups, to creating the Wall of Honor and helping secure the Gold Star Families Memorial, which is just fabulous. It really is. And Woody does a great job, his crew, keeping that place nice and up to date and clean. Your efforts have preserved history and honored sacrifice. You've worked together to help develop Veterans Memorial Park, relocate key monuments, monuments, and you lovingly place over 1,150 flags, as our mayor mentioned, on veteran monuments. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your enduring commitment to service, remembrance, and education in the Town of Berlin. So I have one for each of you. I apologize. As you, I'm sure you know, the state doesn't have any, so we just.
With all the taxes we've paid, Donna, come on. Oh.
A disaster tonight. My daughter's getting married in three days. I should be all getting ready for that. Charles, this one's for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I can have a smooth change. Peter, this one's for you. I can have a smooth change.
And I want everybody to know, it's because of Donna, why we got the Veterans Memorial.
If I had to put up those signs myself, it was going to get done this year. That's what I'm upset. But I know a guy, so.
Assembly, they were going to push the side. He sped up.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
He was dying so.
She wasn't giving up. She wasn't going to give up. No way.
That you guys do for us. I thank you all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys, again.
Probably in here.
Oh, hang around. It's so much fun. Where are you going?
Few more hours to go.
Yeah. All right. See you guys. See you guys. All right. But we have another, we have another.
More proclamations.
Yes, we have two more to read. More to read. So I want to read one. I, they had a ceremony at the Historical Society on Saturday. For, from Marjorie Moore, who we, you know, those of us that have been in Berlin, I don't care how long you've been here, short or long, we've heard her name with a lot of things connected to town, and, and it's, it's worth just a, a quick read on her life and the commitment to Berlin. So we recognize her. Berlin Town Council, Marjorie Moore was a true Berlin icon. She was born into one of the wealthiest and most prominent families in Berlin on July 20th, 1868. She was a lifelong resident. Marjorie loved Kensington. She was known for being down to earth and living a simple life. Though a working woman, Marjorie was never without her white gloves and signature hat. Unlike most women of her class and era, Marjorie was independent and chose a life of community service. She was an incorporator of the Kensington Library Society, later known as the Peck-Moore Library. Devoted to the library, she served over four decades in the roles of secretary, librarian, and director. Marjorie was the first female postmaster of the Kensington Post Office, serving for 10 years. She was a founding member of the Emma Hart Willer Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution and a charter member of the Kensington Monday Night Club, a service, social, and cultural women's group. Marjorie was a gifted poet, playwright, and artist, having a lifelong love of nature. In 1910, she purchased land across from her home to create a secluded park for the enjoyment of others, as well as a shelter for wildlife. Today, it is known as the Marjorie Moore Bird Sanctuary. That's right behind the, you know, Percival, the Peck Lib, the old Peck Library. That's the Historical Society now. Upon her death on February 11th, 1957, Marjorie's generosity reached new heights with the establishment of the Marjorie Moore Charitable Foundation. One needs only to consider what it has funded over the years to appreciate its beneficial extent, to name just a few. Renovate the Blue Hill School into the South Kensington Firehouse, expanded the former Peck-Moore Library building, purchased emergency and transportation vehicles, established a daycare program, and helped to develop the memorial pool and Timberland Golf Course. Since its inception, it is estimated that $6 million has been awarded through hundreds of grants to Berlin organizations. Marjorie's legacy continues today to enrich the lives of every resident of Berlin. So Marjorie is buried next to her parents in the West Lane Cemetery in Kensington with a brown marker that simply displays the initials MM. So in recognition of her life and generosity, lifetime of generosity, leadership, and service to the Berlin community, we hereby proclaim July 20th, 2025, is Marjorie Moore Day. So just wanted to read that to you folks and to the public who didn't make the, it was a nice gathering the other Saturday at the Historical Society, so. And one last proclamation, not to be forgotten, is our guest.
Have people hear from the Commission.
Oh, yes. Oh, good. Excellent. Oh, there we are. Yes, of course. So thank you, guys, for serving on the Commission. I know your time is just starting, so we look forward to our 250th birthday. So whereas the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the formation of the United States of America will occur on July 4th, 2026. Berlin, founded in 1785, has contributed proudly and significantly to the history of our nation and our state for more than 240 years. In 2016, the United States Congress established by joint resolution the America 250 Commission to encourage observance of the 250 years of our nation's existence. The Governor established Connecticut's Semi-Quincentennial Commission with Executive Order 22-02, and the Commission has determined its mission and purpose is to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive celebration, commemoration, observance of the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence through civic, cultural, and historical education, events, and programming. The Commission will enhance tourism, economic development, history, and civic education, historic preservation, and outdoor recreation within the state. America 250 Connecticut will engage Connecticut residents in all 169 municipalities through local, through the local 250th Committees and affiliate organizations through its culmination in 2028. Preserving, studying, and enjoying state history strengthens our communities, builds pride, and forges bonds between Connecticut residents as we work together towards the goal of equality and recognition of the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is appropriate that Berlin engages fully with our past and looks towards a shared future. The mayor and the Town Council thus encourage all of our citizens here in Berlin to create and participate in programs that will commemorate the history of our town, our state, and our nation. So be it resolved that we do hereby proclaim that Berlin will fully engage in commemorative activities leading up to and through July 4th, 2026. We certainly urge all community members to take advantage of the resources available from the America 250 Commission, the Connecticut Semi-Quincentennial Commission, and the Town of Berlin to observe the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence by coordinating commemorative events, planning historical activities, providing opportunities for public discourse, creating new scholarship around Connecticut's complete history, creating new educational opportunities, and seeking opportunities for historic preservation as well. Berlin pledges to uplift, support, and generate commemorative opportunities, and it's dated today's date. So get involved. Thank you for members of, Sandy, I know you're on there, too. And I know, are we, are we looking for more members, or is there?
Dolly.
Oh. Oh, good.
And at this point, I think the Commission is fine. We'd be looking for people to volunteer for the different.
For different activities that we come up with? Oh, okay. Well, that's good. That's great. So all good stuff. Let's all participate in this. It should be a fun, a fun year to come. So with that, we will go to our audience of citizens. So if, yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming. Sandy, thanks for coming. Oh, no, you're staying. You're staying. I'm staying. You're staying. Yeah, you can go. Yeah. Yeah, we appreciate it. So, audience of citizens, anyone has anything they'd like to? Say, say, Chris, bye.
Hello, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. I just wanted to pop up here. I've not been here in person in a while. Wanted to say hello to everyone. And just to mention a couple of things, we have a handful of milestone awards coming up for businesses in town. Just keep an eye out for it. One is Kensington Auto is going to be celebrating 40 years. Safari Golf is actually 40 years. We're giving them an award on Friday. Five Six Eight Systems, I believe, is 30 years. And we have a couple others as well, including Kensington Insurance, 45 years. We just gave one to Bill's Pizza for 45 years. So just kind of keep that in mind. I would say it's very novel to see a community to have this many businesses who've been here this long, multi-generational. I know that it really, it makes up the fabric of the community. And I think it's vitally important that we remember that. And I just want to kind of keep that in mind because they are places, I think during COVID, we saw. When family-owned businesses disappear, they're gone forever. So just to keep that in mind, keep an eye out. And if you get a chance, if you see anything on those, just, especially if it's online, put a heart, thank you, whatever, to them because you know that they, that they fuel our economy. And just wanted to say it's nice to be back here with all of you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. We had a good one the other day, too, the manufacturer in East Berlin. Right? The DeBurring, DeBurring Company.
DeBurring House, which is over on Berlin Street, 45 years. And we actually gave one out recently, which was very cool. Dance of Legacy, 50 years.
Right, that's right. That's 50 years.
Started by Caroline's mother.
Yes, right.
And ran it. One of Caroline's first ever students now runs it. And that first student's daughter is probably going to take it over and run it. So it's just kind of one of those things, even though it's not the same family, technically, the same family.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I want to say we've probably in the last, between, what, 22 and 25, at least nine or 10, 50 years and above, which is really impressive when you think about it.
Yeah.
I just, it's.
Great.
To me, it's great. And as much as I love ribbon cuttings, those are probably even better because those are really a celebration of commitment to the community.
Yes.
Because folks that, family-owned businesses help pay for college and vacations and houses. And I think it's something we just need to keep in mind. So, anyway, I'm going to shut up because I don't do that well. You guys.
So good. And, and you know, these, the, the one thing that I've learned a lot of, of going to some of these, well, ribbon cuttings, but just visiting some of the businesses, certainly with the years they've been in town. It's just the, you know, the products that we have made in Berlin, when you go to the Historical Society, it is unbelievable what our history was. We made all kind of different products here, bricks, and you name it, a whole bunch of other stuff. And, and the stuff that's made now is incredible what, you know, these folks are supporting, our defense industries, our medical supply, you know, medical instruments, and just things I never would have thought were pieces of things that were, you know, fit, go to a lot of different manufacturers out of here. But yeah, I'll see, I knew I'd get Chris back up here again. I knew. I was waiting. I was seeing how long it takes. It took you a little bit long, Chris, getting a little bit older, maybe. I don't know. What, what's up?
Left, left hip isn't doing what it's supposed to.
Oh.
Chris Edge, Kensington Road. So actually, we're going to be kicking something off that I've been thinking about for a while.
I should.
Is it? So we actually took a visit down to one of our manufacturers. And so essentially what it's going to be is, I'm going to go on camera with something in my hand.
Oh.
And you're, as, again, social media person, you put together four choices on what you think it is. You're going to vote, social media, and someone from the company is going to say what it is, how it's made, and really give an opportunity to help connect what happens in Berlin from an awareness perspective.
Oh, that's pretty good.
I think that's important, one, because I think people forget careers we have here, companies that we drive. I don't know what they do. So we're hoping that'll get up there pretty soon. I'm excited about it because I think it is so vitally important, as you said, Mayor. We make a lot of things in this town. Maybe you can't necessarily say it goes into X, but it's part of something bigger. A lot of our companies. So, yeah, that's something we've been thinking about. It should hopefully get off the ground, hopefully end of the month.
Yeah.
Quarterly, and.
Great.
I'm excited about it because there's a lot of cool things that, that we do in this town that people don't even know about.
Brad, it's so true. Yes, good. Good. Anything else? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, we're good. I know, I shouldn't have done that. Well, I wanted to. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be back. Yeah, he'll be back. So, anyway, thank you. Anyone else? We good? No one online, right? No hands raised? Okay, off to our, oh, the mayor's update. Well, I, I think I said enough with the proclamations. Yeah, that's more, more than enough for tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda. So we've got, what do we have here? Charlie, got nine, nine items on here. I'm not going to read them all. Done, like, goodness, enough reading tonight. So we've all read them and have it in our packet. So if there's no questions, we can go ahead and take a motion.
I move, we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, all those in favor. Aye, opposed, so moved. All right.
Before we go on to new business, I'd like to add item 10A to our agenda, which is about upgrading the bucket for the new payload we're going to.
Okay. It's 10A. Okay, second on that. All right, all those in favor? Aye. What? Oh. Okay, so moved. All right, all right, on to our new business.
Right. Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Ryan.
The first item that we have tonight is an authorization to enter into a contract amendment with Alta Environmental. This is on the 1567 Berlin Turnpike property that we've been remediating for some time now. We've done, we've completed the post-remediation monitor, monitoring. And we are now looking to determine environmental compliance. That's the next step with this. And Alta needs to submit a verification report to the DEP. And so this is asking the council to approve me being able to sign that agreement. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Chris from here. And I know we also have Jim Mahoney online as well, so.
Yes. So we purchased this property probably 15 or so years ago, former Newman property, Motors property. Mediation was done. Now it's just really keeping an eye on the, the environmental. And so Alta's been working with us for a while. This is going to be paid for by our insurance company, too, insurance company Fortitude RE. And so in order just to stay with it, instead of having to change gears, we're just looking to waive the bidding process because Alta's been working with us the whole time. Good news is, is the insurance that we purchased is actually paying for it, which is always a good thing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll go and take a motion.
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize the town manager to enter a not-to-exceed contract amendment with Alta Environmental of $15,833.27 for environmental consulting services related to verification report and process for property at 1567 Berlin Turnpike. The cost of the, which has already been paid or will be paid by Fortitude RE as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that. Thank you. Any other, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, so moved.
Thank you. The next item we have is, you may recall, and this is, this is something that the town, I know, has been working on for, for quite some time, is to get affordable senior housing in the Town of Berlin. Know a great deal of, of work has been done on that. Obviously, the council will recall entering into a purchase and sale agreement with Vesta Corporation in late 2024. A great deal, Aaron Greenblatt is here with us this evening. A great deal of work has been done on this. And one of the final conditions of this purchase and sale agreement is a tax agreement. And so you'll recall, we had a number of meetings with the Ordinance Review Committee to adopt a, a new ordinance with the state statute that would allow for this affordable housing tax agreement. And so that's what's before you this evening is the tax agreement. Now, just to give you the highlight before I turn over to Chris, the sale of the property would be $437,500. And then the payment in lieu of taxes on these apartments, which are 70, 72, right?
Seventy.
Seventy, excuse me, 70 units is $31,500 with a 3% escalation on that. So, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Yes, so this is, again, something a little different than we normally do. The challenge has been, as we know, our housing authority tried to make this happen. We went out to RFQ. And that chose Vesta, Connecticut-based company. And I think that the main reason for this as well is the fact that even though our friend Ms. Veach here is working hard up in Hartford, they're not prioritizing senior housing at the state level. Accordingly, we need to step on the town's side to make it work financially. And it's one of these things that I think this is, as we know, that this is a community need. And we're going to see in the long term, it's going to benefit us and really just asking for the tax payment agreement with the, excuse me, with the approval of Corporation Council. But I know, I think at this point, too, I believe we're in, we're in good hands because much like we've done in Newport, Vesta really has been a partner with the town, looking out for what our residents need and doing, we're going to do a project that we're really, really going to be proud of.
Yeah, that's great. Now we're. Yes, very excited that we are almost here to get things moving over there. Shovels in the ground. So questions, folks? We, I know we've discussed this, so. Any questions? Yes, let's move, move forward, yes. With that, we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to authorize the town manager to execute a tax abatement agreement pursuant to Section 8-215 of the Connecticut General Statutes that will provide tax abatement for the project, starting at the amount approved by the Town Council escalating at 3% and having a duration equal to required duration of affordability restriction, 99 years, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All is in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, or so moved? Yes, we're good.
We're good.
We're good. We're good.
I want to thank Aaron again. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, appreciate it, Aaron.
We have another item.
Yes, we do. Yes, one more.
Just the next item also relates to the purchase and sale agreement with 143 Percival Avenue. So I, I do want to thank Vesta again for working with us on a, on a lot line revision as well. So because of that, the town will have additional area for a, a trail connecting between. between, what are we connecting, Chris?
What are the two areas? Maury is gonna give the specifics.
Okay. But we do have to go back for, to send this to planning and zoning, to do an eight twenty-four report. So they'll be able to do that in August, and we'll be able to pick this back up, I believe, at our next meeting in September, if I'm not mistaken?
Maybe.
That's the ask.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, I'm Maury.
You did just get the history, really, which I think you all are aware of anyway. But what we found is despite, since the purchase of the property in 2002, despite the number of times you've seen the eight twenty-four and made that referral to Planning and Zoning Commission, right now we're trying to clean it up and have that eight twenty-four referral match the Planning and Zoning Commission's approved plan. And that was approved last month at Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're asking for you to refer it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which time we're having the applicant work with us to create a new lot line revision map that will show the retaining of the land along the Percival Park area for about, it'd be a minimum of 15-foot accessway, and then also a portion of the property at the south end of the parcel that will connect town land over to Landale, Longdale, sorry, Longdale Street. And that therefore reduces the size of the parcel. It'll be approximately 4.4 acres, but we're subject to the survey of completing that accurately. And that'll all be prepared prior to this public, the public hearing. We're asking you to schedule for the sale.
It's just a walking trail that we're connecting.
That's all that's available at the south. I mean, at the north side because of the wetland and where the development plan, because we sent out the bid, or the RFQ with a small lot line revision, or a partial, partially, a lot line revision to keep the fencing, the fencing for the ball fields on town land, on the park. It was actually on one, the property of 143 Percival. And so that lot line revision was the original one. We then, you know, after some discussions and requests to keep a 15-foot area outside of that fence to walk around the field or whatever, but with their retention and the site in of their building, there's no way without a complete change of the development plan that was put out for the RFQ to add more land area there. That is far enough if it's cleared, which it has some substantial trees that, you know, at this point, I don't think anyone would want to see cleared. But, you know, 50 years down the road, who knows? But it would be enough space for some of the town's equipment to get down if necessary. You know, wouldn't be enough for a road, but it'd be enough for vehicles and equipment if that's necessary to get in. The soccer field has access for emergency vehicles and stuff coming in off carbo. So there's, you know, that's not a, that's not a concern. And then the additional parcel that was part of the revision down near Longdale could potentially allow for a couple of parking spaces or access. We proposed keeping, I think it's 30 or 50 feet. Scale of my map is too, too small right now. But it's enough that, you know, if you came and you made a right-hand turn, you could potentially, but there's a lot of topography there. There's a steep drop-off before you get into the parcel at 143 where the housing will be. So it was discussed whether a fire access going in through there would be advisable, but probably not practical to do that. And the fire marshal agreed it wasn't necessary.
Great.
We are asking that the public hearing be set for September 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Any other questions? We're good. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to refer the sale of 143 Percival Avenue with lot line revisions as proposed for access to the adjacent Percival Park to the north and Longdale Street to the south to Planning and Zoning Commission for a report pursuant to eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes, and to schedule a public hearing for the sale of 143 Percival Avenue, September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Berlin Council Changers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved? Thanks. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item number four. And this is one that should be familiar to you. This is a, in anticipation of the state's requirements for early voting. It came to our attention that our early voting area could use more space. And so the council approved back in December of 2024, taking the space that's currently with the VNA and utilizing that between a new half, half of that area for early voting, and then the other half, which would be social services. And so that was then sent to the Public Building Commission, where I believe they reviewed and approved this also. And now it's back before you with a estimated cost or amount not to exceed $50,000. The real key to this is getting it done on time for early voting this year. And so we really want to get this done by October 1st, so that our registrars can utilize this space for early voting. And we really want to do it this year as a test, because as you know, this year's a municipal year. And we want to make sure that the space is sufficient in anticipation of next year's gubernatorial election as well. So I'll turn it over to Doug, who's been working on this.
Hey, Doug.
Yes, Mayor Consulars. Yeah, just as Ryan said, you're familiar with it. It's more of a little design build project, put some walls up, some doors in, and kind of squeeze two into one, so.
Yeah.
You know, registers have reviewed it, social services, it's not ideal, obviously. It's what we have to work with for now, so.
Better, right? It's gonna be better than what.
Better than nothing, so it'll give us a little additional space.
That's good.
One of our on-call contractors we work with, very successful with them, they do a lot for us, and are able to work with us.
Yeah.
These type of little projects, so.
Alright, sounds good to me. What do you think, folks? Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, it'll be, it'll, it'll be an improvement, that's for sure. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the proposed reconfiguration of the VNA suite and plans provided by on-call contractors, Jacunsey Humes Architects of Berlin, Connecticut, and construction estimate from MA and MDBA Oresco Construction Company of Middletown, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second on that? Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Thank you all. The next one is with Doug too. This is on, this is another returning item on the demolition of the Caretaker's home at our Mobile Home Park at 292 Devlin Road. And I want to thank Councillor Pinesa for suggesting to get quotes. We were, I'll turn it over to Doug, but we got some good news on those quotes. And so we're here tonight with a lower ask of the council, so thank you.
Yes. Yes, as, as recommended, it was a great idea. We reached out to a couple of our vendors we work with and a local vendor, and they provide us very favorable pricing, so able to get that cost down. It seemed very reputable, they've been around a while, and they're local, so.
Oh, that's good.
He's in town, that's good.
Correct, yeah. They actually, he said, the owner, the owners looked at it, he said a while ago, I don't know how long ago, but he was very familiar with the site. Over time, looked at it, so he was familiar with it, and passing along the local pricing to us, so.
Great. Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir.
No, this is great. I'm just curious, so nothing to do with this specific project, but some time ago, we approved an online service. I think we had to pay for our departments to be able to go out to bid, not just Doug's department, but all the departments could use it. That doesn't seem to be utilized a lot. How do we, do our folks need some more training or somebody to work with us? How did that?
No, I can say it is being utilized. We do go out on a, on a number of projects. We, and it has been working very well. I think the, the size of this and the scale, it was a smaller type project, but we absolutely do go out to bid, and it's something that...
I know you go out to bid with projects, but I thought that computerized system was for smaller projects to make it easier. I thought that was the goal. Maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Make it easier for the department, they could just follow the format online and put it out there instead of going through purchasing and all of that. And I may have misunderstood.
No, you, you are correct. It's this, we just got quotes for, or we didn't do a formal?
This is great. I appreciate that. I'm just trying to make life easier in the future. Can you use that service that we signed up for? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's more the, the front-end work, so we still need plans and specs to upload it.
Right, right. And then put that online.
Yeah, so the projects have all that.
I think the charter says 15,000 and up is really supposed to go out to bid. I know we waived it a lot because today's money, that's not.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five is what the charter, okay.
That's why, and that's why we're here is, is asking for that bid waiver tonight on that. But yes, I, I think in, also in regards, time is always of the essence too, and, and a cost factor, as Doug mentioned.
I was just trying to save the legwork from somebody in, similar to Doug's position. You know, if they could just go online and do that, you wouldn't have to.
We would have to have specs though, right?
Yeah, we still have to have the specs, yeah.
Somebody would still be entering that information into the portal, more of a dropdown. So it's very effective, but I see your point that, yeah, we do use that more. A lot of the projects are in that portal now.
Yeah.
Also the CROG contract, just.
Yeah, yeah.
We do utilize that too on some projects.
Well, that's great. Thank you for doing this.
Any other questions? We're good? So we'll go ahead and take.
Move to approve.
I want to point out that it is in the charter for the 15,000, but you passed an ordinance that increased it to 25,000 based upon state statute. So just in case you go back to look at that, it is 25,000 based upon an ordinance that we passed.
And we can supersede the charter with an ordinance?
Yes. So it was okay, but that's within, it was under statute.
Oh, okay. I remember. Yeah, okay. The state statute was, yeah.
Just in case you look back.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Move to approve a bid waiver for local contractors, a rela demolition of East Berlin, Connecticut, in the amount of $38,300, which includes a 20% project contingency for the abatement and demolition of the Caretaker's home owner located at 292 Deming Roads. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
We're going to try and get this done by the end of the year.
That's, well, end of the calendar year with the paperwork and permits and all that.
Oh, good.
Stay tuned.
Great. All right. Agenda item number six. This is for our police department, and it is for the purchase of a new police vehicle that is within, or was within, the fiscal 25 town budget. And so I don't know if our deputy chief wants, or if, Jim, I'm not sure who picked this one.
Jim, Jim won.
Yep, I'm, I'm on.
He's not.
Oh, there you go, Drew.
There he is.
Oh, there he is.
It's just a routine purchase of a, expedition for the police department. He applies, he has vehicles up there. Funding was last year, canceled it out, or carried it over, and have enough money to purchase off of the state contract.
Okay. Question? Yeah. Yeah. All right. Any questions? None? Take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of one Ford X position XL utilizing Connecticut Department Administrative Services Contract Number CT22PSX0133 for the police department for an amount not to exceed $54,285.
Thank you. Second on that? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved?
All right. Jim has the next item as well. This is an annual item that comes up for the purchase of tires for our fleet. So I'll turn it over.
We need tires? Just kidding. Once in a while?
They're all around, they're not.
Yeah, that's a good, that's probably a good thing. That's good.
Basically, the manufacturers of tires, Goodyear's, Michelin, all those manufacturers, Firestone, they have a price, government pricing that's on, on one of the contracts or Sourcewell or DAS. And what we do is we purchase tires from a vendor, a local vendor that awards or gets the award of that pricing from the federal. That's all it is. It's a series of tires that we utilize throughout the fleet.
Yes, to this every year.
All the tires, OEM tires, we use on police vehicles or fire trucks, emergency vehicles, just so that they, they're OEM and that they give them a better comfort. And they also cut down on our liabilities a little bit. Other vehicles, dump trucks and smaller administration vehicles get, I won't say a lesser grade, but they may get an off-brand or they may get something like that.
All right. Any questions, folks? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town's purchasing requirements and approve the purchase of tires from Connecticut Tire, Sullivan Tire, and DePetro Tire utilizing government pricing from the tire manufacturers in the amount not to exceed $45,000, because this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved? What do we got?
Thank you all. You have a, Jim's back with another, another item.
Auto. No, he's not, he's not going anywhere. I didn't, I didn't think he was, but yeah.
Tires.
Oh, we need parts too? Oh, yeah, get him a chair.
Well, so, Jim?
This is the annual awarding of our parts purchases. These are the ones that we formally get close to or go over the $25,000 mark on that we continually use. And they include NAPA, Taska Ford, Monaco Ford, municipal truck parts, and Columbia Ford. Primarily the two that are used out of there the most is NAPA and Columbia Ford.
Okay. We have several motions here, so.
Move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using Sourcewell Contract 100124-gpc from NAPA Auto Parts for an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from Taska Ford for an amount not to exceed $15,000. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second. Thank, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from Monaco Ford in an amount not to exceed $15,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second. Thanks, Donna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedures to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies from municipal truck parts for an amount not to exceed $25,000. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved?
And move to approve the purchase of auto parts and supplies using state Connecticut Department Administrative Services Number 23PSX0211 from Columbia Ford for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Okay. Thank you all. And now for the next agenda item, Jim will put on his.
Jim, really?
His other hat.
The other hat.
The other hat, I got it.
And for our, this is an annual event for purchase of PPE.
Annual of, yeah, environment. We're doing it a little early. We try to do it around the first of the year, or shortly after the first of the year. We're doing it early because it seems to be extended eight times on PPE. For the last couple of years, we've gone over, had to carry money forward to pay them. This year, actually, the gear came in in mid-July, actually a week and a half ago came in, but it was over the July 1st. So we believe that by moving it up, get it in within the same fiscal year that we're trying to.
Yeah. Good. Great. Questions, folks? If not, we'll go ahead and take three motions here.
Move to approve the purchase of Lion Fire Department productive closing from CNS Specialty in an amount not to exceed $80,000 utilizing the NPP Government Contract Number PS60065.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved?
Move to approve the purchase of Globe Fire Boots from Firematic Supply for the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Thank you. Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved? And.
Move to approve the purchase of Carney's Helmets from FireTech Industries to exceed ten thousand dollars. I think it means not to exceed, but.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved? Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next item, and this is an item that Jim came to me. Uh, we've been, we've been in discussions and, and working on this a little bit for a number of months. Jim's been working on this a lot, actually, and, and so this is a modification to our current firefighter incentive program agreement. Now, uh, from what I understand, this was budgeted for, uh, a couple of years ago, but we haven't implemented the increase to our firefighter incentive program yet. And so, uh, Jim also wa, was hoping to take this opportunity to not just increase the, the amounts of the annual stipend, uh, but also to simplify the, the current agreements and, and because right now we have three ways that our firefighters are, are compensated through an annual stipement, uh, stipend, uh, pay as a paper call, as well as an annual contribu, contribution to a retirement account. So, um, I believe what we would like to do is we would like to convene the subcommittee of the town council, the fire services committee to work with our, uh, corporation council and potentially even labor council in regards to the retirement account aspect, uh, of this. But, um, uh, that's what we would need to do to update that. And just so you know who's on that, we have, uh, councillor Panessa, councillor Prusen, councillor Rosso, and councillor Beech. Turn it over to Jim.
I think he's covered it.
Yeah.
There are three different programs out there. There are two, three different qualification, which that when comes time to do these reports and verify the employees or the firefighters, um, eligibility for this. It's a, I think the process, what I'd like to do is I'd like to get those all together, have one requirement, one report instead of multiple reports that we have to run. And with that in there, um, also increase some of the incentives that are there, um, help the firefighters. All, you know, attention of, of the firefighters, improvement of the firefighters is what's going to the volunteer service goal.
Do you have a consensus from the members of the fire department, what they'd like to see?
This was proposed to the chiefs, not the individual firefighters. I can send out.
Well, I just, I don't want to do something that the men aren't happy with. I'd like to give them something they like, yeah.
Get your wallet open?
Oh, Charlie write a check. He's got a point. Yeah, he just wrote a check.
Oh, but let's do the best we can to make them happy.
Yeah, I agree. No, I mean, they deserve whatever we can do.
There goes no meetings in August, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, we, they, we certainly, so they're worth.
And things with the, for, 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 like, doing this chief officer, is it creating like another level? So there's still room?
Correct. Currently, currently, the categories for the in, incentives start off with an administrative officer, which, which is a chief, assistant chief or captain. What I'm doing is, is I'm breaking it out, um, look to the future, so that we have chief officers, we have line officers, we'll begin to pay people for, I know I'm walking away. Begin to pay people, uh, for their medical certifications like that. And, and bringing you, bringing the council subcommittee in, bring some different ideas in, and hopefully we can make something worthwhile.
Yeah, good. So, uh, take a motion.
To refer the topic of the revision of the firefighter incentive program to the council's fire service committee.
Thank you. Second on that? You, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, so moved?
So I'll reach out to those, uh, councillors who are on that, we'll coordinate, uh, for, for dates for that. I will use both your emails. No, absolutely. Most likely though, well, it'll be September.
I think they should meet in August. I really think they should meet in August. I really think they're, haha, just kidding.
But we do have the firefighter picnic coming up that we could, we could meet before.
The twentieth, right, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think.
After that.
Yeah. Yeah, that might be the case. Yeah, yeah. Good. All right, good.
Thank you. And, and actually Jim had.
Jim is here again, but unbelievable.
We had a late addition to the agenda, but this is one.
Must have flipped on this one.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you know, stuff happens, you know, you never, you never know.
A bit of a whoops because it was supposed to be on the last agenda.
Ah.
Got missed.
Yeah.
So what it is, is we purchased a new loader, and with that new loader, a series of, um, pieces of equipment or, uh, come with it. One is a four-in-one bucket, which is utilized for construction work, especially, uh, especially doing pipe work and things like that where they're utilizing the bucket to put rock down and stuff like that. The highway department wanted to make a change to that and put a clamp-like brush bucket on there, feeling that they already have a four-to-one bucket. And they could utilize a clamp bucket more to load the, um, vegetation that's down in the complex, such as the leaves and the grass, so that they go out and also assist with some cleaning of brush after a storm. So in doing that, we canceled the four-to-one bucket, and we got a price on a larger clamp-style bucket. And unfortunately, it came in nine thousand dollars over the price that we had pre-approved for the boat, for the loader. So what we came, we have to come back and now get the approval, go over that by nine and change, nine, nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars.
It's an attachment for the machine.
Attachment for the.
It, it's great, like, uh, emergency storm, this thing can grab a whole tree off the road and take it away and very quick.
Yeah. I think so.
It's a big loader, a big three-yard loader. It's a little bigger than that.
Oh, they could use that. Let him, let him take that out in the storm. All right. Uh, okay. Any other questions, folks? We're good? All right.
Move to purchase one clamp bucket for the highway department's new Caterpillar nine-twenty-six wheel loader from H O Pen with attachments utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number zero-one-one-seven-two-three-dash-cat for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
Second. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Alls in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved?
Thank you.
Have a good vacation.
All right, thanks. You too. Take a vacation, Jim. All right. You know, I did, you know, I feel, I, I, I can't wait anymore. I feel bad, Kate. I meant to, uh, give this to you as the den mother, so to speak, of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, a, anniversary. So I'm gonna, I just want to present this to you, Kate, uh, for all the work that you have done.
Good den mother.
Yes, and will be doing. Well, we don't want to get it, we don't want to get into that, so, yeah, I'm sorry, Kate. Yeah, yeah. She'll be doing a little bit of work, yeah, just a little, a little extra work, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Kate. We appreciate it. Okay. I feel better now. Okay, number eleven. Yes.
Glad you feel better.
Yeah, much better, yes.
Well, I guess it's a good time to talk about Steel Boulevard.
Oh, maybe it's not. No, okay, no, it's fine.
Now, so, uh, this is agenda number eleven tonight. So we have a few things, uh, for your, uh, consideration tonight is, one, uh, we thought it would be a good time for a discussion and a, and a general update on the project. It's been very successful right now at fifty-five Steel Boulevard in particular. Uh, the first floor foundation is poured, their framing, they're, they're working hard. Uh, we've been working with our LEPs on this, Lorero, who are here, uh, this evening. We have, uh, David Ferick here is in person, and we have, uh, Kevin Bitterman also online. They're going to be doing a presentation, uh, after on, uh, what, you know, a little bit of a background on the site, what we've been doing, uh, so far, and what, what's to come. So we did ask them for, uh, for what is anticipated, some project costs throughout the completion of the project because, uh, we thought, you know, as we're coming to that place where there is a finish line to this, is, we can, we can identify those projected costs and, and Lorero. Yeah, yeah, no, and so, um, and so we're getting there. We really, we really are getting there, and, uh, we wanted to show that, uh, to you tonight. Talk about that. Uh, there is a, a request for additional general consulting services with fifty-five Steel Boulevard that would get us through the remainder of this year. Uh, we do want to let you know that just with, the way that costs are looking, in all likelihood, we will be coming at some point to ask, uh, for, uh, some part of that bridge loan that the town had asked, um, that the town had, uh, given us while we waited that loan from, uh, DCD. There was, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, if you remember. Um, so some other news on particularly thirty Steel Boulevard, that's where, uh, Steel Boulevard Park is going. Uh, we did, um, and I know David and, and Kevin can speak to it, that we, we've been doing some sampling, uh, for, uh, we had one area that, that did, uh, we found a little more dirty dirt, and so we're try, we're currently working, uh, to do some testing to find out the, the extent of that. But, um, I'll turn it, before I turn it over to, to David, I'll turn it over to, uh, Jim Mahoney's online as well, and so I gave you a kind of a quick level. But Jim, do you have anything to add on, on this before we, Lorero?
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, just a few things. One, uh, Tony's on, online also, if you have any project questions, but obviously you see there's a lot of activity on the site. And, um, you know, we're kind of going back and forth between, um, their work and our work in terms of outside the building foundation. So that's a coordination issue, but it's, you know, it's exciting to see that moving forward. I think, um, from what we are hearing from all, uh, from BMW, our, our contractor, and Core, who's, um, who's handling the construction project for Newport, uh, the plan that we've discussed to keep all the materials on-site and under the Geo membrane uh, seems to be working, so that's, that's the good news. The thirty Steel Boulevard, just a little bit of history on that, that we, that was part of the Kensington Furniture Properties that we acquired long ago for the police station. We did environmental testing at that time. We did a phase one environmental assessment and also a limited, limited phase two. Uh, we hadn't encountered any problems. That problem, that project, as Ryan said, that's going to be the future site of the Steel Boulevard Park, which we got steep funding for. But, uh, we've been pausing that activity because, uh, we had a material pile from the Boulevard project that had been living there for quite some time. And, um, and, and now we finally got that removed, and that site needs to house a subsurface detention system that supports the Boulevard and fifty-five Steel. So now that that, um, now that, now we're at that stage of the project, uh, that's when we engaged Lorero to do, you know, to give us advice and do some testing of the material. Uh, we talked about excavating all the material, uh, decided to do some test pits and, uh, and, and, um, Dave and Kevin will elaborate further, but, uh, that's kind of what got us into this, um, thirty Steel Boulevard, uh, situation. And the only other thing I would say, just to add as a general, general statement, is that, you know, uh, as Ryan said, we think, you know, we may have to tap into some of the three-hundred-and-sixty thousand. It was kind of thought of as a bridge loan to begin with, and we'll report further on that in the future as things, you know, get in better focus. But we, um, we are pursuing, we have had funding from our insurance company for off-site costs, particularly investigations of off-site groundwater, uh, plume, et cetera. And so we'll be looking to try to get some of our future costs offset by our insurance company. And we will also discuss with Department of Economic and Community Development the potential for additional funding for the project, uh, as we move forward. So that's kind of the general overview, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Dave and, uh, and Kevin.
Thank you, Jim.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. So, Dave, Dave Ferick, I'm president of Lorero Engineering. I've, I've worked with Jim for a number of years on, on this project. With me virtually is Kevin Bitterman, so he's the project manager for a number of years on this project as well. So I just wanted to, Jim mentioned stopping, just give a little overview status of where we are and what's coming down the road in terms of activities to close out the site. And, uh, Kevin has a presentation, um, he'd like to put up on the screen.
Could be sharing. Hold on. Okay. You got it, Dave, right?
Yeah, I can see it. Could you, um, make it larger, put in presentation mode?
I don't know if that's any better. Hang on.
Down at the lower right-hand corner should be the presentation mode button.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, good. Great. Next slide, please. Just a little background. So this property is former, formerly eight-eighty-nine Farmington Avenue, renamed with the Boulevard. Uh, it was about one-point-six acres, and it was, uh, previously Precision, uh, Products. And they, uh, were in the manufacture of auto, automotive parts, aerospace parts. And, um, it went out of business in the early two thousands, I believe, maybe a little earlier. The town acquired property through foreclosure in two thousand and nine. It was basically a, the, the linquent property, and, uh, town sought funding in order to put the property in, back into productive use. So as a step towards that, entered into the Connecticut Brownfield Remediation and Violization Program, otherwise acronym BRRP. Uh, that was in two thousand and sixteen, so that allowed the town to, um, gain funding. That was a prerequisite step to receive grants from the state. Um, so knew from the beginning that the remediation was really going to be, um, suitable for mixed use, so both residential and commercial, and tying into the transit-oriented development in the area. Um, so we expect completion, complete by, by twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, construction's underway, and there's a lot of progress being made. Next slide, please. This is what it looked like before. This is with the buildings emo'd, but you can see the footprint of the former manufacturing facility there. And to the, uh, lower part of the drawing, you see other properties there, including, uh, eight-sixty-one Farmington Avenue, eight-seventy-three, the, the train station parking lot over, over to the upper left-hand corner. Next slide. Uh, this is another shot from twenty-eighteen, so not much activity. It's what it looked like, street view.
Lovely looking, yeah.
Yeah.
Much better today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next slide. Just a little overview on, on why we're doing this. Um, so there were pre, previous work from other consultants prior to, uh, in two thousand and five, um, through two thousand and ten. So that was also funded through grant money. That was to determine whether or not, uh, there were environmental impacts on the property, and if so, to what extent. Um, so basically on the site, found widespread, uh, looted soil, and that's not uncommon for manufacturing operations and the, the history of operation on this site. So small property, a lot of buildings, a lot of activity over time. So most of the site was, was contaminated. And exceeded the state standards known as the remediation standard regulations. Um, groundwater, there were groundwater, uh, contaminants that it still are, but on the property, that's not surprising. We did ultimately, uh, collect additional samples on other properties, eight-sixty-one and eight-seventy-three, and found some impacts there which were addressing. And found some impacts there which were addressing. The good news is the impacts did not go across Farmington Avenue, so they are localized in this general area. So the plumes are not increasing and once as the cap is, is placed on the site covering some of the contaminated soil. Expected that groundwater will continue to, to become cleaner. Next slide, please. So the time that we got involved, working with Jim and the town, looked at a couple of different options. And the most obvious option that was on the table was just digging out the contaminated soil. The concern with that approach is the remedial action plan that was put together for, prior to our involvement, showed basically little squares of soil from identified impacts that would have to be removed. Our concern was that the whole, most of the property could be contaminated, just based on experience. Investigating remediation properties of this nature. We proposed a different concept, which was capping the soil in place, which is very common for brownfield redevelopment projects. You could see the cost differential that was put together in the time in the slides. And basically could be, could have been half the cost. Based on, of just digging it out, collecting samples and hoping no more excavation was required. Based on some additional testing completed after this point in time, in order to confirm the specific location of the, the cap. Realized that most of the site actually is contaminated. So if we gone with the other option, it would have been quite a, quite a bit more expensive than the remedy that was selected. So basically we're, we're capping the contaminated soil in place and then building, building on top of it. So it's a, it's basically a plastic liner, I have some pictures that I'll show you. And that's very common for brownfield redevelopment in the state of Connecticut. Next slide, please. This is redevelopment plan on fifty-five Steel. So you can see the building that's being erected currently, what the parking area will look like. The Boulevard to the upper right-hand corner, that's where the water detention system was, was placed. And that's where another property where we did find some additional soil impacts. So that's what Jim was referring to earlier and I'll touch on that more in a couple of slides. The next slide. Same picture, different viewpoint, but that, that yellow area shows where the, the liner will be placed. So that's where the air, the impacts soil are located. In some cases, there's impacts in other areas, but we're moving the soil prior to placing the liner down to be protective and to, to save money on the remediation. Next slide, please. So, so where we are at this point, there was a little bit of contaminated soil in the pathway of the Boulevard, which is now in place. So that's going back five years, was associated with a former dry well. So that soil was removed and to be placed beneath the liner system. There's no further action there and the Boulevard's obviously there at this point in time. So the engineer control or the liner is currently getting installed along with the development. So that's started and it will anticipate it'll be completed this. I have a couple of pictures there. I'm sorry, this is just the, showing the foundation of the new building. And these are a few months old, so this goes back to May. You could see the, the black fabric, it's, it's plastic, that's what's going and being installed on top of contaminated material. Where the building will go and outside of the building. And you can see where there's penetrations for utilities, et cetera, those are all getting sealed as well. So after the liner is placed, there's still a number of environmental actions necessary to close. Close out the requirements of the state. So basically some reporting obligations, have to complete an investigation report. Different type of report associated with putting in the engineer control. An application for what's called environmental use restrictions, essentially a deed restriction on the property. That prohibits the excavation or disturbance of the cap without first getting permission from the state. A couple of other reports and then lastly, completion of groundwater monitoring. So that, the groundwater monitoring at some level will continue in perpetuity. That's the trade-off for leaving contaminated soil in place. But again, one of the costs I showed earlier, when we compared alternatives. All of that groundwater monitoring costs were, were added for comparison. And then finally, certification by an L E P, which be Kevin or I, just signing off on them. So once you get through all the reporting obligations, what's, what's left for the, as long as the liner is in place. Of the inspections, some of which the town can complete on their own or environmental consultant can assist with. Maintenance, the maintenance is essentially, the normal maintenance would be required anyway. Ceiling cracks in asphalt. If there's erosion in landscaped areas, those need to be repaired. So that's this basic stuff that would otherwise be required anyway. And then inspections of the environmental use restriction. It's essentially the same thing, making sure that the pavement's in good repair, making sure the landscaped areas, there's sustained vegetation, there's no erosion. That's basically it. Next slide, please. This gets to the costs, we intentionally made them tiny so you could. We broke things into two buckets on the left-hand side. Are the costs to close out, all the reporting obligations I just mentioned. And on the right-hand side are the ongoing costs. They look at them in aggregate for a five-year period and break them down to an annual cost. So these are costs that we anticipated, you know, those were built into the budget. But at this point in time, we're just identifying what, what additional costs will be required to button up the site. And hopefully you have a package where you can see those costs.
Yes.
I'm happy to obviously answer any questions. The last slide is just to further elaborate on thirty Steel Boulevard. So that's in, previous slide, it was in the upper right-hand corner, right at the elbow of Steel Boulevard. Were putting, put in the water detention system. So it wasn't part of the initial investigation, it's a separate parcel, but it was necessary for the drainage in the Boulevard and to support the development. So that needed to excavate some soil for the detention system. Identified some contaminants in soil. It's similar to what we've seen on the site and it, it's, it could be associated, potentially it's not too far from the railroad. It could be associated with the former industrial operations. P A Hs are polyaromatic hydrocarbons, there's essentially the same contaminants found in asphalt fragments or some kind of fuel oils, et cetera. Not necessarily super high concentrations, but they are above state standards. So we're looking at a couple of different options, including if necessary, we would take it to a, a, a local landfill. And dispose of it that way, it's possible we can actually reuse it on the, on the Steel Boulevard property. And we're, we're basically at the point where we're just looking at the data, right? So not exactly sure, but there's a number of opportunities and regulatory means to save money. That's all, presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you send this presentation to Jim Mahoney and then Jim can send it to me for our record?
Jim has it.
Okay, Jim, if you can send it out to me, please.
Yes.
Initially, you said furniture building property. There was a environmental study done and it was considered all right at that point when the town first acquired it. But I understand that the phase one and phase two was done when they bought that property.
Oh, the.
Where the Kensington Furniture Store, which was going to be the site of the park.
Kevin, answer that one for me.
Well, the thirty Steel and Jim, Jim can chime in on it, but it, the phase one showed the operations to be, from an environmental perspective, fairly benign. There were some environmental concerns, identified some truck loading docks. I believe there was a former underground storage tank. Those things were looked at, soil borings were installed, there really wasn't anything of significance found. The detention basin is off, kind of in the corner of the property, if you will. And not an area where we would really expect to find a problem, but we did need to look at the soil for reuse options. Because of the presence of polluted fill in the area, we're adjacent to the railroad and we have seen some impacts from coal and coal ash before. So this, the sampling that was performed on the seventh is some test pits, six test pits and combination of composite samples, grab samples. And you know, you're, there's always a potential for one sample to be an oddball and I think that's what we have here. But we've gone out and collected additional samples so that we can, we can see first off, is there a problem spot? Which really visually, there's no indication of, but if there is, we could segregate that soil and possibly put it under the liner at fifty-five Steel. And the rest of the samples, we're going to use for statistical evaluation to look at compliance with the R S Rs. So that data will be due back this Friday.
I guess my question was, could we have contaminated that by stockpiling? You had mentioned that there was soil stockpiled in that area. If we moved dirty dirt on top of that and contaminate that ground is my question.
No, the soil on top, it was from the Farmington Avenue Soil Replacement Project, which we did characterize before it was, before it was moved to the property. And that analytical showed there was nothing in it other than some, some background concentrations of metals. So it wasn't the, the storage area wasn't used for contaminated soil, it was used for that, what was shown to be clean material.
Thank you. Does that add? That's my question.
What else? Yeah, no.
On the high end of completing your projected costs to complete this at fifty-five Steel. Some of it is covered under the existing contract. But about a hundred eighty thousand is not, is that my understanding of the scope?
Correct.
And then, of course, there's always a contingency.
Yeah, we added a contingency.
And I'm looking at the high because chances are the way things are now. So there's a wide end of the tunnel is what I'm understanding?
Yes.
I think it's the train coming the other way. We spent a lot of money to give a piece of land away.
Never should have foreclosed on it in the first place, that's all right, whatever. It's okay. Water way under the bridge, we, you know, we're, we're getting a good project out of it, thank goodness, right? Yeah, we're almost there.
And just, just so I understand correctly, the annual closure cost that we have to pay annually for the inspections of the water and the that's on the, that's on the town expense, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood correctly, okay?
And typically, you know, on, on other brownfield sites, once we get to that point. That gets, you know, built into our annual general fund budget, it goes into Mike's budget. Not a capital item.
Thank you.
More money?
Didn't want to assume, so.
Money, more money for Mike, there you go.
It might end someday, like we saw with the piece on the turnpike tonight, that's coming to an, this is on the far end of the project.
We hope.
Yeah. Great. And we're almost there. Any other questions, we're good?
Like we got a choice.
We got no choice, thank you, thanks for, thanks for coming tonight.
You should have the packet, I thought.
Not the.
I have copies downstairs, I, I, I thought they were on your table, I thought Christie brought it, we'll get them after.
Yeah.
We got the copies, we printed the copy.
Leisure, leisure, leisure reading, yes.
Um, so you do have an action item with this as well, so.
Yes.
The idea was to fund La Rero's general assistance with this project through the end of the calendar year. And so that's, that's what the item is, as well as I did approve the bid waiver for the borings on the, the thirty Steel Boulevard, because we really, we just needed to get that going. So we know how much of that soil, the contaminated soil we have and so we can, we can get rid of that. As well as there's a, another additional item for thirty-five hundred dollars for eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue. So the accounts are identified in here, where the, the funds would be coming from for that. And so we, Jim and I had spoken about this and, and we really don't want to keep coming back on a regular basis. So that's why we want to fund the forty thousand dollars to get us through the end of the year.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yeah. All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion, yeah?
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize the town manager to enter a contract amendment with La Rero Engineering. A forty thousand dollars for the continuing environmental consulting services for the fifty-five Boulevard remediation project funded by twenty-seven thousand five hundred from Farmington Avenue Development Non-Grant Account and twelve thousand five hundred from the Admissible Brownfield Grant Account. And three thousand five hundred contract, dollar contract for E U R services related to eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue. Charged to the Admissible Brownfield Grant Account, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Here we know other comments or questions, all is in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved?
I want to thank you, I want to thank.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming out, thanks.
And Tony, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Tony, see you on there.
You as well.
Thanks, Jim.
Good night.
Good night. Yeah, Tony.
Thanks all and good night, appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Should we move on?
Yes.
Item twelve.
Let's move on.
So this is, we've talked about this, this is the Willer School parking lot, which is in desperate need of.
Yes, we see that.
Some, yes, it's, it's not great, but I know Mike's been working hard on this to. Be within budget, be able to get done prior to school starting.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Assuming we get a yes, right?
Oh, wow. No, no pressure, no pressure.
Well, just a fresh memory. I came to you guys before with basically an approach to expand this parking lot, so the regular parking lot, little parking lot. Yes, the staff parking lot. And there were some concerns, so you referred to P B C and they beat me up pretty bad.
Did they?
So what the heck are you doing?
They did beat you up bad? Oh, man, are you all healed up now from the, you took, you took the punches? Sorry about that.
Diligent, so I realized, yeah, I, I heard some people get it, well, I thought it only flooded up to here. And maybe the whole thing was flooded, but no, it really, it goes up beyond the parking lot. So I did all my homework to get it.
Yeah, it's all right.
P B C said, okay, go back to square one, just stay within the existing footprint of parking lot. So the area, the areas outlined are red. We build, pave and re-sprays. We're not going to move anything around, we're not going to change the entrances, we're not going to change the aisle widths, we're going to keep exactly the same. But it'll be a fresh, fresh day parking lot. So we got costs from.
Yeah, there you go.
And that was facilities as well as building, they all came together, so that's why your package is so beefy.
But I want to make sure that every question was answered, as possible. Yeah. So around numbers, we're at a hundred thirty thousand for paving and milling. And that's under a D A S contract, same as we use for our roadway.
And that's under a DAS contract, same as we use for our roadways. Um, with Galasso doing the work. And then about thirty thousand is for lights that, um, will be put in to make the parking lot safe. And the rest of it is contingencies and a little bit of incidentals. So. And Kevin found low SIP that is actually almost, well, the reason I put six hundred and five dollars in there was because the low SIP amount that he has is one eighty-nine, two oh five. So the incidentals are real reverse engineering. So we can, and then any money we save, we'll get back to the town, obviously. So that's kind of where things stand. Um, I have tentatively lined up all the contractors so they could actually start the end of next week.
Wow.
They actually have, they want to do it on a Saturday because they're going to be milling and paving Spruce Brook Road. So they're going to be in town. So.
Oh, that's nice.
Fortunately worked out.
Oh, that's nice.
There's not any great planning on my part, but anyway.
Yeah.
So that's where it is. So the total is one eighty-nine.
We should have taken credit for it. You take credit for it.
It, it all worked out. A lot, a lot of working pieces, a lot of players and, and Doug and Woody helped tremendously.
No, that's good.
Yeah. And actually Woody did some test bits. We realized we can't go down and do full depth reclamation because it's all clay underneath. So we're just going to go mill down to the processed, put a fresh, uh, section of three inch pavement on there. And, um, hopefully we'll get it done before the kids get back and the sheets get.
So what's that give us? Three, three weeks to lessen?
Yeah.
It'll be August first, August second is the Saturday, I think.
Okay.
So that'll be the day that it'll be milled and we'll be paved the following week.
Following week. So we'll get in just under the wire. Okay, good.
Yeah, that's good.
That's great.
And I know we had, I know your plan was, which was a good plan as far as additional parking, you know, which, so I, maybe we could talk about fixing some, on the other side of the brook there. Yeah.
Look at this as Phase Two.
Oh.
And there's a lot of green space over there.
Oh, 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 okay. There.
Well, they, who's the steam civil engineer.
Yes.
He just said, well, we could do this and next thing we get more parking. So.
Yeah, okay.
They need parking.
Yeah.
So we try to get some more parking on the upper lot.
Because that's not utilized.
You know, basically we do the entry ways and then two different drop offs, which Ashley has told me about. One for the, uh, special needs kids and one for the regular. So we have to keep all that in, in mind. But I think there are opportunities, especially in here, for more parking.
Oh, okay.
So that'll be on the next program.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good. Doesn't flood there. So we should be good.
And it won't get any more parking this year, but at least.
Well, they could get by. Yeah. They've got by for, I don't know, fifty years or whatever. So they could probably get by.
But, um.
There's probably more.
It's, uh, parking area here.
Yeah, well, that, right.
Gravel there.
Yeah. Okay.
Stand up so it's, and people have, I, I park, I park over here when it's not wet.
Yeah.
People don't surf.
Yeah.
So we can also throw some of here and then you can deal with it's over there, but.
Right.
Most people wouldn't be going out that far.
No.
There is an opportunity to put some supplemental, meet enough there's expanded.
Okay.
Gravel.
Yeah. That's good.
How many spots do you think you can get out of that green area in the front that's, they don't utilize that for anything. I think it's just the sign is there.
Yeah, look at all the to it. A lot of stuff.
Oh, it underneath there? Okay, got it, got it. Yeah.
But hopefully we'll get like something significant.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that parking is tight over there. Always has been.
Yes.
Thank you. And then they quote for the one, that includes the striping and all that as well, right? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yes.
If we get caught short, we'll just put Woody's guys out there because here. But I'd rather have a professional.
Do some painting.
Put all in one shot.
Okay. Any other questions, folks? We good? So we will take a motion, Charlie.
Move to appropriate one hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars for Phase One of Willard Parking Lot paving project. And to authorize the town staff to purchase purchase orders for all project related expenses.
Take a second. Thank you. Hearing no other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Got that done. Yeah, you gotta.
I want to just keep rolling?
Keep rolling.
This is, uh, we don't want to talk about salt, but we have to. Uh, we had to fill up the shed for the winter. So we use, uh, we typically use the Crog bid, which was, uh, came out this, um, it basically just came out from the Crog. Um, Morton Salt won the bid. Price was eighty-seven dollars and ten cents a ton, which is actually almost a little bit less than last year. We want to use them for, uh, a road salt for the season. Contract's good through next June. So we can start filling up the salt, salt shed when Steve and Danny want to just start getting that going. So we like to use that, uh, Crog bid for the, uh, treated road salt.
All right. Uh, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize use of Morton Salt of Chicago, Illinois for treated road salt utilizing the Capital Region Council of Governments Contract Number Seven 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 for snow and ice control through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Hearing any, no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Uh, the next one is a similar request. We want to use the Crog, um, number seven seven two for traffic striping. And that is good through the end of this year.
Okay.
A uni- unit price contract. I think Jim put in some of the, um, the units and the cost with the bidders on the top. So we can choose whoever we want for whatever particular striping project we have going on.
Very colorful chart. Yes, very nice. Yes. Like it.
It's for paint.
Yeah, that's why. That's it. Any questions, folks? Not? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract to purchase street line painting services utilizing Crog Contract Number Seven Seven Two with the most cost effective and qualified contractor.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And last but not least, we want to use the state bid or the DAS contract for a hot mix asphalt. Um, and that is a unit cost contract. Um, the price per ton on, on picking up from say Tilcon of New Britain would be between a hundred to a hundred and ten dollars. Hundred and sixteen for curb mix, which is a finer mix. So that would be to allow our highway department to, you know, pick it up when we're not paving. Some road, road repairs, potholes, that kind of.
Right.
Like you have a big choice where you can go.
I know, I know. Truly is Tilcon, you know.
Or Susio once in a while.
And, you know, available. It's Tilcon and New Brit. Yeah, of course.
You can use the contract for that.
Yeah. All right. If there's no questions, we'll take a motion.
Move to approve utilizing state contract. State of Connecticut Department Administrative Service Contract Number Two Five P S X zero one zero eight for by two minutes concrete through May eighteenth, twenty twenty-seven, or to a new expiration date that's extended by the state.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Oh. Jeff.
Looks like we're comp.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Yeah. Sorry you had to be last up tonight. There you go.
All right, councilor, shut off.
Okay, town, uh, manager report, right? We're there.
There.
Phew.
All right. I just, uh, I want to share some, some sad news with you all. Um, Bruce LaRoche.
Oh, yes.
Is the chairman of our, our water commission unfortunately passed away. When, yesterday morning?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Five thirty at night.
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, I'm just going to mention that too. Glad you mentioned it. Um, that's awful.
He volunteered a lot of time for a lot of years.
Yeah, he did. Yeah.
Condolences to his family.
Yes. Let's do just one moment of silence if we could. Yeah. Thank you.
On a, on a more positive note, I have, uh, someone behind me that some of you may have met, but I, I definitely want to, uh, reintroduce and, and thank. His name is Thomas Clark. He's been an intern, uh, with the town of Berlin over the, this summer. And, uh, he had many, many options, uh, for what he could be doing with his time. And he's been volunteering with the town of, of Berlin. And, uh, he's done a terrific job. You may be getting some emails from the town that have, uh, meetings and, and events and, and Thomas has been instrumental in helping to set that up as well as our events calendar. And he's been also helping the planning and zoning department. Uh, so Thomas is going into his sophomore year at UConn. We have him for, I think, a couple more weeks. Um, but I just wanted to, uh, say a big thank you because he's been, done some great work for us. So.
Yeah. Well, thanks a lot. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, excellent. Appreciate the help. Good luck in your next, uh, year.
What do you mean?
Um, it's kind of a mystery right now. Math, applied math is just science right now, but I might be switching to civil engineering.
Oh, there we go.
I don't know what happened to public administration, but.
Yeah. Ah, maybe something else.
Kind of scared him off. I don't know. Maybe it was taxes.
Ah, maybe we'll do some applied math instead of that government stuff. Yeah. Good for you.
Uh, I just want to let, uh, you all know about one, um, tax issue that, that came out. I know, uh, mayor's aware of a, um, as you all know, there's been a lot of changes to how motor vehicles are taxed. And with that, there were some changes to trailers this year and, and some trailers aren't taxed and some, some are. But DMV had them all coded, some of them with the same code. So some, uh, campers that should have been included on the grand list were left off of the grand list. And this recently came to light. And so we have, so we have sixty-three residents in town that own campers. And they will be receiving a bill. At first they did not. And so this is anticipated to bring in approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional tax revenue to the town. And so we're not alone. This is happening throughout the state because of, uh, because of these changes and because of the way, uh, it was coded with, with DMV. So.
And I mean, they were always taxed. Anyway, this was just a new, uh.
Yeah, some trailers are no longer.
The utility trailers or whatever they.
Some trailers, yeah. Uh, some that have personal vehicles like a snowmobile or something like you, that trailer would not be taxed now.
Yeah.
So it was not a lot of revenue to the, it was like twenty dollars, thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Huh.
This changes and.
Yes.
I know that they passed a law last year, which they fumbled a bit and they made some adjustments to it. And I'll be honest with you, I'm unclear. He seemed to think that the town can make the decision or is supposed to be making a decision whether or not you, the disabled veterans. And there's specifics in terms of what years or what, you know, the cutoff is. If it just covers the land or if it covers the land and the property to have, you know, an exemption of tax. Can you, are, are you clear on this or can you get us a clear answer?
Or maybe Jeff. I don't know if Jeff knows too.
Yeah, I can. There were, there were some changes, I think, just recently.
That included land because before it was just the building.
Yeah, it was botched in twenty-four. The interpretation, general interpretation was that it was just land, which made no sense. But it was fixed this last session. So that includes improvements as well.
Okay, so does the town have to make any of those decisions?
Oh.
So it's anybody that.
Have to apply.
In that guideline, okay, what the years are that qualify.
Right.
Um, they can just make application.
Yep.
And both land and, and building dwelling are covered.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear with that.
Yeah, it was really bad last year. There was a lot of confusion about it. I don't know. I don't know.
It's exposed to. Because that's not how it was even passed out of the, out of the meeting.
Yeah.
You know.
I don't know how most of this stuff ends up reading the way it does, but.
But it, it changed.
Get a hundred lawyers and make an improvement. It's a problem.
It's a mess. It's a mess. Okay.
Yeah, it has been fixed. The legislature did fix it.
She didn't hear it now.
The assessor. Yeah.
Right. I just, I just wanted to go back to the trailer issue for a second. You indicated that there was sixty-three campers in town?
Sixty-three that did not get a bill, that are going to get a bill.
Okay. All right. Because I was going to say that sounds really low for a town of our size. But if those are the only ones that didn't get a bill, I was going to say, because I have them and we got our tax bill. Um, so we were the lucky ones.
So did, so some did get billed probably.
It's the way it's coded with DMV. And so, uh, Joe Ferraro was explaining to me, some are coded as eleven. I think some were coded as a twelve and the twelves you actually had to, got to sort through because not all the twelves were counted. So that's where, so I think the elevens, if you're an eleven, you got a bill already. But if you were lumped in with the twelves, you had to go through that and verify.
So did they do, I'm assuming then the tax department did a comparison to who got a bill in twenty-four versus twenty-five? Did that kind of comparison?
No, they've been, they've been doing, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, it came to light when I think a resident asked why they didn't get a bill. And when they looked, they said, oh, you should have gotten a bill. And so then, then they took a deeper dive into it. And so, uh, so, you know, we want to make sure we're fair to everybody and we have to follow statutes. And so, uh, so that's why the bills are going out just late for that.
I just wanted to clarify the number because it just sounded.
It does. And I verified, uh, again today because I, I was wondering the same thing. And, and so that this is, uh, this is straight from the assessor's office.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I just, I, I mentioned to you all, and we did do an announcement on this, uh, open space and watershed land acquisition grant, which the town received last week. So this is sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for the acquisition of the Fontanella property. And I just want to thank our state representatives, uh, for their help with this, as well as the Berlin Land Trust for contributing, uh, twenty thousand dollars as part of a match. And there will be more to come on that. But.
Yeah, nice.
Uh, for the town. I'm going to skip over. We'll have a, I want to have a more of a discussion on projects. Um, some of our larger scale projects. And so, uh, so we have some, some big projects coming up. We have the police department, part two. Uh, we have the, uh, East Berlin Pool Splash Pad, which we, uh, want to do. As well as, uh, the, uh, PBC was, uh, had gone out to do an RFP for, uh, architecture and design for the, the McGee Science Classrooms. So, uh, we also, uh, had the, the high school track. These are, these are large projects and each one requires design work. And so I had, just so you know, there were two agenda items that we pulled tonight. One was, uh, the McGee Science Classrooms. The design, architecture for that was, uh, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And the police department architecture, uh, A and E was a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We have a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the year in that account right now. So we want to do the design, uh, we, of the splash pad. We want to do the police department. And so, uh, more to come. I just want to let you know, we'll, we're going to be looking for additional funding and all that for these projects. But we're, we're going to be looking for the council for some, you know, direction on which priority, priorities you want to see, uh, move forward.
Yeah, I mean, the splash pad, kind of want to. Yeah. Splash pad, we kind of want to move that forward, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's.
How many classrooms are they going to design for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
What's that?
How many classrooms are they going to design for that price?
I don't have it in front.
What's the price of the, uh, what, what was? Yeah.
No, it's more than one, I think.
Got a lot of questions on that project, but, you know, that, that project, as we know, that, that's never was on any list. That just popped up. That was, you know, we kind of have that ten year capital plan with big projects, but that popped up a year ago, maybe? Was it a year and a half ago?
To visit and they showed us when we were there.
Yeah, yeah. But then, but then, uh, the, the last gentleman that, you know, Jeff Kugno, who was before he left. But he came here and just popped out three million dollars. Three million dollars, which we had no, no knowledge of, just.
Told me we were going to remodel two rooms for a hundred thousand dollars. I'd say that's a lot. This is just to draw a picture of the two rooms.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, I mean, and I know Public Building looked at this, uh, closely because they were trying to find, uh, standards for, uh, middle school science programs. And they couldn't find any, but that doesn't mean there aren't any. But they, so they wanted, yeah, I don't know. The chairman was talking to me about it, but I'm sure there's some. But it just depends on the, the scope of how big this needs to be. Um, I think he did kind of look at the classrooms too at one point, the chairman there. But. So, yeah, I mean, we just have to figure that out. Yeah.
Wanted to, to.
Yeah. I mean, that was just late to the program for, for.
They should, my suggestion is there's plenty of, uh, education specifications that are out there that are developed by consultants for, uh, feasibility, planning purposes, as well as for the actual projects.
Okay. So they should.
They're, they're out there. They're, they're very detailed. That's bucks. They're required as part of the grant process.
Yeah. I mean, and.
Records, so.
And I assume that includes, I mean, you know, I, I don't know. The equipment, I mean, we saw the classrooms not that long ago. The classrooms are in great shape, honestly. But I mean, certainly the, you know, the countertops, the probably cabinetry and the, and, and the. The equipment, I mean, we saw the classrooms not that long ago. The classrooms are in great shape, honestly, but I mean, certainly the, you know, the countertops, the probably cabinetry and the, and, and the equipment, you know, would, I'm sure need to be, sure. But rip, I don't know, I think they're, seem to be considering ripping the whole area out and making bigger. I, I'm not sure what they want. For three million dollars, it seems like...
We'll have Ashley come in and...
Yeah, figure out what they want.
I know there's a lot, you know.
Yeah.
It would have been, I, I just wanted to kind of...
Yeah, no, I appreciate you telling us that. I mean, obviously, we're, you know, we got the overrun for the HVAC project. We have, uh, you know, other, we have the tiles in the high school, so there's some other, unfortunately, what, we, we would rather not have some of those, you know, overruns, but we do, so I don't, that, that would be somewhere I would think, you know, down the line a little bit, because we really have, we, we just had to cough up another million too, right, part of the... Plus, we haven't even, we don't have no idea what the tiles will cost yet, which we're estimating might be a million dollars itself, but anyway, so, yeah. I mean, the design, figure out, I mean, you know, that might have to be pushed back a little bit just because of what we've got...
Yeah.
Ahead of us now, you know, unfortunately, but anyway.
So, um, yeah, just to, just something to keep in mind. We'll, we'll pick that back up and...
Yeah.
For, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then speaking of the August break, I just thought it might be a good idea to remind the council, uh, it may be a good idea to, if you have some free time to look at the charter. If we want to do a charter revision, uh, you know, put that together, a commission in the fall. Uh, start thinking about things that you might want to ask the commission to look at, and so, um, so if anybody sees, uh, the other council, uh, councilors as well, maybe remind them, because I think some of them were also interested in that. Um, and then, uh, we have a YMCA update. I, we're moving along. I'll have a, we'll have a more detailed. I'm not going to go into everything now. Uh, uh, councillor Prusen would, uh, I know, I have a report for...
Hey, you know what? He missed it. I mean, you know, he wasn't here. I mean...
The whole show, and you're not here.
That's not, you know, yeah, that's what happens, you know? No, just kidding. We're just, we're just teasing him.
I do have a report. Uh, Mike is awesome, sends me a report before every council meeting now with, uh, with where we're at, and so we, we continue to make...
Yeah, good, good.
And then lastly, um, is just, uh, I can't believe it. I've, I've been with the town of Berlin over six months now, and with that, I have a six-month review per my contract.
Oh, yes.
And so...
Sharpen our pencils. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Ignore that for now.
Oh, oh, yeah, what?
Ignore that for now.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I was speaking with Attorney DeNarfrio before the meeting on, on this, and so, uh, what needs to happen is, that gives you an idea of what it looks like.
Yeah.
But what I'm going to do is I'm going to do my self-assessment, and I will send that to the council. There's a, there's a column. Each one of you has your initials on a column. We're going to, we're going to have to clear all the boxes, because...
Oh, good.
Numbers in there now.
Yes.
Clear it out, so it's very easy, and so what you would do is you would go in and you would review and, and put your own numbers in, and then send that to Jeff, and, and Jeff will compile that together.
Okay.
So I believe, talking with Kate, we were talking about the second meeting in September, uh, we could have an executive session and...
Oh, oh, okay.
Something to look forward to.
Yes.
Um, and that's it for, uh, for myself. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate that. All right, so what do we got? Uh, I don't think we had any, right, special committees, did we? No. No, council communications. What do we have? Anything, folks?
They were, they got moved to...
Oh, it did. You're, oh, you're right about that. Oh, no. Yeah, you got that. And there was something, I got to go, we got, there's a C C A R C meeting up in Slater Road on Thursday too. I committed to that. Oh, no.
Where does C C A R C?
The, uh, the folks that handle the disabilities, like they have their, their place, the Lutheran church there, but their, their headquarters, and they have something, you know, Thursday night is C C A R C, uh, Slater Road. I think it must be. I think it's their annual meeting up on, uh, Slater Road. The, you know, the folks that have the other office in the church here on the Chamberlain Highway. Linda, yeah, it should be, it's five to seven, so I forgot the, that's right, because they moved the concert, huh? Six or six-thirty. I think it starts at six-thirty. Yeah. So... Oh, yeah, okay, well, yeah, so we got a couple things. Well, we didn't plan on things being that night, but... You don't have that? C C R's? Uh, ask Christie. I think Christie knows. Um... C C A R C, A R C, C C A R C, I believe. Um, okay, so, um, any other, any other councillor? Are you good?
Mark's not here to tell us.
Yeah.
He usually fills us in.
That's it? Okay, all right, that's... The twentieth? Right? Oh, this is twentieth.
Six o'clock.
It's the last Timberland.
Timberland, yeah. I think, I think it, dinner starts at six-thirty, but people, you know...
Oh, six, yeah, yeah. Yeah, what day is the twentieth?
Twentieth.
The third? I can look. I guess what day that is?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, okay. All right.
How's that work? Do we have to tell them in advance how many people, or to show up, or?
Um, so, yeah, Saul, Saul's taking care of the arrangements with the golf course, and, and we have the, the fundings in place, uh, for it, and so right now Jim, uh, put the notice out to his, you know, to, to our members, and they're signing up. I haven't gotten, uh, updated count.
Can we bring a guest to that, or what's the...
I think you could bring a guest to that, yeah. Just, uh, if, I would just say, if, uh, if you could RSVP to me if you plan to attend, so I, and I'll, and I'll relay that over to Saul. Okay?
Okay. And I'm a yes, and probably a second yes.
Okay.
Yes, a yes from me too.
Okay, so, one, two, four, five, six?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We will talk about it.
Schedule a committee.
Yeah, you should do it in August. I mean, you know, you shouldn't have a break. I'm just kidding. Why take August off? There's no reason for that.
We had like five special meetings in August. I wanted to choke them. We had more meetings in August than the rest of the year.
Not available. Not available. All right, just a motion for our, um, minutes.
I would make a motion, we approve the minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, posed, so moved. And a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second? All those in favor? Aye. All right, we're, we're so adjourned, yes. Thank you all.
Home, but you can't stay here.
Thanks.
Very good. I, I didn't know what to expect, you know, anytime you guys feel bouledgered.
Ah, you never know.
Again.
Never know.